Good morning. Let the record reflect, all directors are present with the exception of Director Adams, who has an excused absence, with Director Lopez appearing in person and Director Alejo Phillips and Parker appearing via video conference.
Thank you. Mr. McKee, do you mind leading us in the pledge? Any additions or corrections to this agenda, Madam Clerk?
There are no additions and corrections.
Announcement to the interpreter, please.
Buenos dias. My name is Maria. I stay here for the services of Intrepid in Español.
Any general public comments for the Board of Directors of the Beranda County Sanitation District? Seeing nobody coming forward, I'll go to the Zoom. Seeing no hands going up, I'll bring it back. We had one item on consent today.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion from Phillips, a second from Alejo. Any public comment on this consent? No hands up via the Zoom. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Director Alejo?
Aye.
Director Phillips? Director Phillips?
Aye.
Director Parker?
Aye.
And Chair Director Lopez.
Aye. The motion carries and will adjourn the Board of Directors of the Beranda County Sanitation District. Call to order the Board of Supervisors of the Monterey County Water Resource Agency. Actually, you know what? At this point, I'm gonna re- I'm gonna stop that and go ahead and reconvene the Board of Supervisors meeting, and at this point, we're gonna take up, what was the item? Item thirty-four point one out of order. Um, do I have any public comment on Board of Supervisors, item number thirty-four point one regarding fora's dissolution?
And Chair, on that one, there was additions and corrections that were received in a revised Detachment A and a revised Detachment C.
Okay, so we added additions and corrections. Can I get a motion to make those additions and corrections first?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Parker, second from Alejo. Any public comment on those changes? Okay, roll call vote on that, please.
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Parker?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Lopez.
Aye, the motion carries. So now we're taking up thirty-four point one. I'll once again see if I have any public comment on thirty-four point one. Nobody coming forward in chambers. I'll check the Zoom. I see no hands up. I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion from Parker, a second from Phillips. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Parker?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Lopez.
Aye, the motion carries. At this point, we're gonna recess for just about three minutes to get some signatures on documents. We'll be right back.
Test, test, testing.
Okay, at this point, I'm gonna call to order the Board of Supervisors of the Monterey County Water Resource Agency. Let the record reflect that all supervisors are present except for Supervisor Adams, who has an excused absence. Any general public comment on this agenda? Seeing nobody coming forward, I'm gonna turn to the Zoom. I see a handout from Michael Muegen. Mr. Muegen, you'll have two minutes to address this board. We'll give you the ability to unmute yourself now. Mr. Muegen? Looks like you don't have a microphone, which means that maybe your audio didn't connect. Think you'll have to disconnect and reconnect. We've got no audio for you, Mr. Muegen. Okay, I'll check one more time. Any general public comment on the Board of Supervisors of Monterey County Water Resource Agency agenda? Seeing no hands up, nobody in chambers. We'll go ahead and close that and bring it back to this board to take up our first item, which is to adopt a resolution approving the Monterey County Water Resource Agency fiscal years twenty twenty-one budget. That's a presence due from Mr. Chumbo.
Chumbo?
Mr. Chumbo with us?
Here I am.
There you go. Welcome, Mr. Chumbo.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Lopez, Honorable Board, members of the public. My name is Fabrizio Chumbo, Finance Manager with the Water Resources Agency, and I do apologize, we had some issues getting this item into last week's agenda, but here we are today. So the item today before you is to adopt a resolution approving the Monterey County Water Resources Agency fiscal years twenty twenty, twenty-one budget. Prior action on this item, so the agency's Board of Directors approved the budget back on April twentieth, and on June second, we brought this item before you, Board, for consideration. However, the item presented at that time did not account for a four hundred and six thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars increase in cow cost that had been released by the Autor Controller's Office on May twenty-nine. At the June second meeting, this is what the agency's budget looked like with an estimated usage of fund balance of approximately six point one million dollars. Again, these figures is not a- figures did not account for the increase in cow cost. So staff went to the agency's Board of Directors with recommendations on how to absorb the increase on June fifteenth, and following the Board of Directors meeting, and given the usage of fund balance, staff recommended absorbing as much as possible within the June second presented budget. So this included further reductions to salaries and benefits by forty-five thousand dollars by delaying the hiring of a senior water resources hydrologist, which was vacated by Ms. Elizabeth Kraft, who became the agency's Deputy General Manager, reducing equipment purchases by one hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars across multiple agency funds, reducing consultant costs across multiple funds by one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one eighty-eight dollars. And lastly, on Fund one twenty-one and one twenty-four, you say combined amount of twelve thousand, two hundred and nine dollars to fund the increase, as these two funds had a bare-bon budget in which nothing could be cut or reduced. So the combination of these reductions and the usage of fund balance would fully fund the four hundred and six thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven increase. This here is a summary of the agency's overall budget. The two highlighted funds will be the two in which we increased appropriations in order to fund the increase. So it was eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine in Fund one twenty-one and four thousand and seventy dollars in Fund one twenty-four. The financial impact is an increase in expenditures of twelve thousand, two hundred and nine dollars as compared to the figures presented at the June second budget hearing, and a corresponding increase of fund balance usage. With that, today's action is before you, and I'll take any questions you may have.
Any questions from Board members? See no hands up. I'll take it to the public. Any public comment on this budget? Mr. Lipe, come on forward. Give you two minutes to address this board. Can't see the microphone from where I'm sitting, but if you'll do me a favor and speak pretty close to it. Yep, please do.
Good morning, Chair. Um, you know, uh, this budget is reflective of a lot of budgets around everywhere these days, very short. This one, I think, has been operating under some time. Um, you, the Board, have the right to raise, raise rates through cost of living adjustments that weren't done for many years before you were here, Chair, and I think before most of the supervisors were here. Those opportunities were lost. Primarily, people don't want to pay more if they can help it. Unfortunately, with the cost of living adjustments, those are things that you had every right to raise, and the Board didn't recommend it, and you, the supervisors, ultimately didn't, didn't raise them. So it presented a situation where the, the revenues have been eroding for some time. And I know some people want to blame it on civil right, uh, civil right to litigate against, you know, that people raise issues legitimately that they feel are, are not right. Um, and that, that to me is a, is a, is a red herring. You've had every ability to raise those cost of living adjustments for many years, and you, and they were not done by many general managers and by the Board. So, uh, I know this is a tough situation, um, but it looks to me, just from the outside looking in, and I'm speaking, my name's Bill Lipe, speaking independently as a resident of Monterey County, it seems to me that this agency is on the brink of bankruptcy and insolvency. And I know there are some things in the works to try and get some rates raised to do some maintenance. There's a project out there that's been simmering for seven years. It's questionable as to how effective it's going to be, and the cost is certainly not reflective. I know Mr. Bob Anell's name is quoted quite a bit. It's something he endorsed, but I don't think he, I mean, he's gone now, so it's probably not right to put his name on any of it. But I don't think anybody expected how much this is gonna cost, and it's, and I don't think the tax base is there. So I wish you good luck on this budget. I know you got a lot of other headaches with a lot of other budgets coming up on all the different things you oversee. So, good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Lipe. Any other public comment on this item? Seeing none in chambers, I'll turn back to the Zoom. I see no hands up, so I'll bring it back to this board for action. I had a motion from Supervisor Alejo.
A second.
Second from Supervisor Phillips. Can we go ahead and get a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Parker? Supervisor Parker?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Lopez.
Aye, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We're gonna adjourn the Board of Supervisors of the Monterey County Water, Water Resource Agency. That was improperly put there. Okay, so we're gonna reconvene the Monterey County Board of Supervisors on our public agenda items. Let the record reflect that all supervisors are present except for Supervisor Adams, who had an excused absence. Additions and corrections, Madam Clerk?
They were read earlier into the record.
And we did have one more that I wanted to put up at this point, which is we will be adjourning today in memory of Salinas Mayor Joe Gunter at the request of Supervisor Alejo, and so if we could take a vote on that, just to make sure that that gets through appropriately.
So moved. Second.
Second, Alejo and Phillips. Uh, any comment on that addition to the agenda? Seeing none. Any of you via the Zoom? Seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Parker?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Lopez.
Aye, the motion carries. We'll continue with our agenda. We'll start with the approval of our consent calendar, which is number eight through thirty-four. Now that we've completed thirty-four point one, is there any member of the public who wishes to have the item for consent today? Seeing no hands going up in chambers and no hands up via the Zoom, I will ask the same of Board members. Any items they wish to have pulled? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to move consent.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
On, on consent, item twenty-six, I just had a question because it was raised by some community residents on, on, it's an item for, on Direct Department of Social Services, Lori Medina. This is the, the question, I mean, the, I guess, the agreement with the Mexican-American Opportunity Foundation, providing childcare services for foster youth, and I wonder if she could just answer a quick question on that?
What was the number, Supervisor?
Item twenty-six.
Twenty-six, okay. Ms. Medina's coming forward here in chambers. Give her just one second.
Good morning, Lori Medina, Department of Social Services.
Yes, Ms. Medina, if you could just, the question was, this is for childcare services for, for foster youth, and the question was whether this is something that we've done before, or are we expanding this contract to assist foster youth because it's related to difficulty, having more families take care of foster youth during this COVID crisis?
Yeah, this has been existing contract for, I believe, the last two or three years. So it's not a new program. Certainly, the state has recognized the need to support foster parents by providing childcare or some resource for that and so, but this is an ongoing agreement. It's not a new one.
Great. Thanks for that clarification, as folks said asked. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Any other supervisors with questions? If none, I'll entertain a motion to move consent.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Phillips, second from Alejo. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Parker?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Lopez.
Aye, the consent calendar carries. We're gonna head into other board matters and go with Supervisor Alejo first.
I'll come, sorry, I'll come, I'll come back.
Okay, Supervisor Phillips?
That's good. I don't like to follow Alejo anyway, so, uh, now, all of us are shocked, and I appreciate Supervisor Alejo putting, putting, putting on the, to adjourn the memory of our good friend Joe Gunner, who I've known for fifty years. All of us are shocked by it. I talked to him on, on Friday. He was gonna miss the last fora meeting, but expect to be out of the hospital on the next day. On Thursday, we had a pop-up in Castleville, our first one up there for our testing, and I was very impressed with how organized and everything was put together by the Natividad Hospital Organization, and so we hope to have more of those out here in North County. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Phillips. Next, we're gonna unmute Supervisor Parker and see if she's got any comments for us this week.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not a lot to comment on. Just want to wish everyone safe Independence Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Parker. Supervisor Alejo?
Yes, same here. This Saturday is our Fourth of July, and unlike every previous year, many local communities are having the inability to have Fourth of July parades, and, and we know that it's, it's, a lot of families, it's a time where they want to gather, but it's, we want to just give a reminder about reducing the, the sizes of, of family gatherings, of, of the celebrations and parties, and to really remember that, um, the more people at a house, the greater the risk is, and so we want to protect our, our grandparents, our parents, our children, our uncles, aunts, cousins, and so all those safety measures that you can take is gonna really help reduce the risk, reduce the spread, and it's really gonna save lives. There's been so, so many tragic stories recently of family gatherings and parents who tragically pass away because it was well-intended, but we do put those we love most at risk when we have sizable gatherings, even, even among our own families. So I just wanted to encourage all our families. This weekend is a time for celebration during these difficult times, but as people go out, as people celebrate at home, let's do it as safe as possible because, and we do it because we love our friends and families and we want to protect them. And I have some words to say about Joe Gunter, but we're journeying in memory, so I thank the Board for allowing that to happen today, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Alejo. I do want to share with the community, this Thursday, there will be a pop-up testing site in Chular. It will start at ten AM, run to three PM, or as long, as long as there are tests available, that will test a hundred people. There's no identification or insurance needed. You simply need to be first. It's one of those first come, first served issues, and I want to thank the school in Chular for partnering with the Natividad Foundation, Natividad Hospital in the county to get this done. We continue to battle COVID here in our communities, and one of the best ways that we can do that is knowing what our status is. I continue to encourage the community to get tested. If you fear that you may have been exposed, it's critical. We do have a lot of cases in Monterey County that have been asymptomatic, which means that people can walk around a community spreading the virus without knowing. And so we ask that if you question whether or not you may have been exposed, it's best to get tested. The sites are still active in Greenfield and here in the city of Salinas, and as we head into a major weekend like this one, celebrating our independence as a, as a country, it's important that we be mindful that we are still in the middle of a pandemic, regardless of how we might feel because businesses are reopened. It's not business as usual. There's still a lot of restrictions, and appropriately so, to help keep every one of us safe. So I hope that everybody will have a safe Fourth of July weekend, and remember that we are still in a very critical fire season that just started here in Monterey County, and so as you consider using safe and sane fireworks this weekend, I hope that you'll make smart decisions about where those are used, and if you're considering using illegal fireworks, that you refrain from doing so, as they have several impacts on our communities, including on veterans with PTSD, or animals, and starting fires if not appropriately used. So please keep all that in mind as we head into this critical weekend, and I wish you all a safe and happy Fourth of July. And with that, I'll turn to our CAO for any comments or referrals.
Uh, Chair, there are no comments or referrals this week. Thank you.
At this point, we're gonna go ahead and open up general public comments. This is for the public to share comments with us on items not on today's agenda. This would be the appropriate time to come forward. You'll have two minutes to address this board.
Supervisors, my name is Tim McCarthy. I'm the League Commissioner of the Pacific Coast Athletic League. We are thirty-four schools across four counties, including every high school in Monterey County. I've had communication with the various supervisor offices, and I think has been passed along to the Health Department about our request that for specific authorization to hold small group summer conditioning programs at schools. When I say small group, we're talking about twelve, twelve athletes to one coach for conditioning only, no competition, no physical contact, six-foot social distancing, checking the kids every day, a series of steps that are taken to ensure safety and, and control. We, as I say, we're four counties, and the other three, Santa Clara first, then San Benito, now Santa Cruz, starting next Monday, the other three have authorized these kinds of conditioning workouts, and we're asking for the same authority from the County of Monterey. I don't know, perhaps you can help me, you can help us, our schools, give us some guidance as to how we go about doing that specifically. We're kind of running up against roadblocks in that regard, but the fact is that three of the four counties that I work with have already done it, and would like your assistance and guidance on how to make that happen safely, controlled groups, supervised groups here in the County of Monterey.
Thank you. It's not a, unfortunately, at this point, because it's not an agenda item. We can't have a two-way conversation, but we will ask the Health Department to reach out. If you'll share your contact info through the clerk, we'll make sure that we can have that conversation with you and try to make it fruitful. Thank you. Thank you for your advocacy on behalf of our students.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board members. My name is Michael Groves. I'm the president of EMC Planning Group and also the baseball coach at Monterey High School for the last forty years. First, I'd like to just start with honoring Mayor Gunter. You know, Salinas is a challenging city to be the mayor in, and I, I really want to honor him for all the service and work that he's done over the years to support not only the city of Salinas, but our communities. Um, I want to talk about sports, youth activities and sports. Um, I wanna talk about, uh, sports, youth ac- activities and sports, uh, ba- mainly outdoor, uh, non-contact youth sports. Uh, it seems to be a missing element in the discussions, we're opening up a lot of different things like restaurants and bars, and those activities tend to be, activities for adults, but the, the youth, uh, youth are sitting at home, uh, the, the last report was they've gained about seven pounds in the last three months for not, doing any activity. I sent a email to the board members in May, uh, making a request, and with some specific protocol, so I have copies of that, that, if you wanna see a hard copy, I can leave. And basically, the request is, is for us to be able to open up this month of July, uh, in, uh, youth activities, uh, and what we're talking about is, uh, non-contact outdoor sports, baseball, softball, soccer, those types of sports where we're not, making contact, where we can control the contact. There's a set of protocol in, uh, the, the email that I sent to the board, i- is a very strict protocol, it's based on the protocol, from both the, the National Federation of High Schools and, and other state protocols that we've seen in other areas. Um, and the reason I really wanna push this is because these kids had a hard time missing their spring activities. They're sitting around, they're not having a lot of guidance in terms of what they're doing. There's already kids, and I think this is something the Health Officer and the Board wouldn't wanna see happening, but there's already kids heading to, the other areas of the state, uh, there's a tournament going on in Marysville this weekend for baseball, there's practices going on in Palo Alto, et cetera. So, uh, what I wanted to say to you is that in March, on March eleventh, we played our first league game as a Monterey High School in the P C A L, and on March twelfth, thirty minutes into practice, we were asked to leave the field. And the look on those kids' face, the sadness, um, the, the hugging, you know, the, the, the anger, I saw anger, I saw all different types of emotions, come out of those kids, we stayed on a text chain with them for the last two, three months to try to keep everybody focused, but, they're just all asking me, when can we get back out on the field? So just to, to shorten it down, uh, e- essentially, we wanna have short, you know, small groups, we would have a shortened season, probably four weeks, practices with small groups, have maybe twelve games, and allow these kids to get back onto the field and get some closure for our seniors.
Thank you Coach, we appreciate your comments, thank you.
Good morning Chair Lopez, and the Board of Supervisors listening by phone are on Zoom. Uh, my name's Armando Barrigan, I'm the General Manager for the Salinas Sports Complex, um, softball, baseball so- baseball facility. Um, I would like to request that the Board of Supervisors and the Monterey County Health Officer, Mr. Moreno, um, allow us to open up the softball, baseball facility, um, immediately, and to allow us to provide sports again for our community. Um, a few weeks back, we submitted a proposal, um, to the Board of Supervisors to reopen outdoor sports venues in Monterey County. Um, within the proposal, um, we had safety protocols and guidelines to open up our facility safely. Um, here are just a few of the protocols and guidelines, all players, coaches, staff, um, spectators entering the facility would be temper- temperature-checked with an infrared, um, non-contact laser thermometer. Everyone, everyone would be required to wear face covering to enter the facility. Players would be required to wear face coverings when they're in the dugout or when they're up to bat. Um, all coaches, umpires would be required to wear face coverings throughout the entire game. Um, in the proposal, there was more specific, um, guidelines and safety protocols. Um, next, I'd like to give you just an idea of how we can, um, do social distancing within a softball or baseball field. A small softball, baseball field is approximately thirty-two thousand square feet in size. You could fit thirteen, twenty-five hundred square foot fast food restaurants within the foul lines of a softball or baseball field. An infield where most of the action takes place is ten thousand square feet in size, with a maximum of twelve players, two coaches, two umpires, in that area, that is six hundred and twenty-five square feet of space per person. That is like placing one person in a regular-sized classroom, or four people inside a fast food restaurant of twenty-five hundred square feet. This provides considerable amount of space for social distancing. Um, with youth sports and schools shut down to COVID nineteen, since March nineteenth, kids are not exercising, they're not socializing with their friends anymore, and they're gaining weight, just like Mike said.
Thank you for your comments here, times, we appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Bill White, President of Monterey County. You know, thinking that this time it's gonna be different than it has been in the past, in regards to budget and markets and everything else, I think is a big mistake. Our state adopted a budget that is smoke and mirrors, they're robbing from Peter to pay Paul, they're shuffling money around from different accounts, to shore up a two-hundred-billion-dollar expenditure budget, it's not real. It, they're banking on the federal government ish, you know, doling out trillion, a trillion dollars plus to all the states, and, I think a budget based on that is, is a very shaky one at best. Our budget here in Monterey County was already shredded before this virus ever happened. I'm a little bit alar- I'm a lot alarmed as a taxpayer that there is no objectivity in cutting a budget, I'm not saying deny services to people. I'm saying, take a scalpel to the, to the budget and cut things that are not necessary now. Preserve what you need to, but there has to be some cuts, because banking on Washington DC coming through with money is a, is a, is a fool's errand. In regards to the public pensions, which I know you struggled with CalPERS here, I know the city of Salinas has struggled with CalPERS, they are now borrowing money and leveraging to invest in the stock market, in private equity, and in equities themselves. Public pension holders should know that the state, that the regulators of their pension programs are gambling. So for all those that wanna shout out about capitalism and the evils of the stock market, just know, you pensioners, you're complicit in it. You're, you're helping to inflate the massive asset bubble that's going on Wall Street right now, and in the world equity marketplace in general. I mean, they're investing in Chinese equities as well. Chris, I wish you good luck in regulating the pyrotechnic activities, uh, south of Chular, I've witnessed them, they're quite spectacular. So I wish you good luck in letting folks know that maybe this year we can calm things down a little bit, thank you.
Thank you Bill, I appreciate that, anybody else in chambers? Ain't nobody coming forward, I'll turn to the Zoom. I see one hand up from somebody named Mike, Mike will give you the ability to unmute yourself and share your two-minute comment with this board. Mike? You need to unmute yourself. Mike? Okay, we're gonna go over to call in user one, we're gonna give, we're not sure who you are calling user one, but we're giving you the ability to unmute yourself now. Go ahead and share your public comment with this board, you have two minutes.
Hello Supervisors, this is Mike Kelly, can you hear me?
Yes Coach Kelly.
Hello, uh, Supervisor Lopez, it's nice to hear you. Um, th- this is Mike Kelly, uh, I'm currently the baseball coach at Carmel High School. Uh, I took a hiatus a few ye- uh, about ten years ago and was involved with Carmel Youth Baseball. I am, uh, here, here today speaking just to, um, try to increase the dialogue between, uh, a, a group of people that are out there, um, representing youth sports, advocating for youth sports, that we just try to have as, uh, an, an open and current dialogue, with, uh, the county supervisors as well as, uh, our Health Director, um, to do the best we can and be as proactive as we can, to try to get kids outdoors in a safe environment, and, uh, moving, moving and, uh, getting some exercise, because, wh- what we're seeing is it's just not the, the greatest situation with kids, uh, staying at home, staying indoors. Uh, if there's any way we can try to, uh, get out kids safely, uh, we're all for it, and, um, people are being very responsible, uh, in supervising these things, so if, if there's a way we could get the dialogue, uh, uh, together, uh, as, as proactive as possible, I would appreciate it.
Thank you Coach Kelly, for those that don't know, Coach Kelly was my high school baseball coach, uh, one of the greatest coaches I ever played under.
He's very proud of it.
And, uh, yeah, I actually won a championship with him, an M- M T A L record in, uh, two thousand and four, so thank you Coach.
Right, you're a little bit.
(laugh)
(laugh)
All right, we're gonna turn to Michael Muugan next, Michael Muugan will give you the ability to unmute yourself and share a two-minute public comment with this board.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, um, just, hi, I'm Michael Muugan, and I'm, I'm here also, uh, supporting, uh, Coach Groves and Coach Kelly, and, and their, their plan to continue playing baseball, I recently graduated Monterey High School this year. Um, I had my senior year fleshed short, was in, was unable to finish, uh, everything that we all kinda thought we were going to, be able to finish, that goes for the seniors, the juniors, just everybody who's involved with the program, but, um, I'm just here just voicing that it was really kind of a tough situat- and as I'm sure that, sports aren't really, you know, the main focus in a lot of people's lives, obviously, there's everything with COVID going on, and there's a lot of sick people, and, it's just a bad situation in general, but I feel that there are ways that we could continue to potentially play out, uh, a season in July and August, whether that be with ramifications like taking our temperature every time we go to the field, and, maybe having social distancing between the teams, uh, having some guys in the bullpen, having some guys in the dugout, uh, we got cages at Solicido. But, I mean, I'm just here to say that it was, it was a really tough situation, getting everything we worked for taken from us, um, just kind of out of nowhere, and obviously with good reason, um, the safety of people is the number one priority, but as I feel that, I feel that we are at a place now where we can potentially move forward with sports and maybe start to get back into that, as opposed to, keeping sports shut out, um, until this thing is over, because the truth is, we may not, we don't really know when this is gonna be over, we don't know, when things will be back to, uh, normal, I guess, if you could say, but, I mean, I feel like there's, that we can, modify baseball, we can, uh, comply with these, these guidelines, and, it, just, hopefully we get, hopefully we get a couple games, just because it was, it was just a tou- it was just tough, and it was sad and upsetting for a lot of people, um, regardless of your role on the team or your age on the team, it was just tough, but.
Thank you, Mr. Muugan, we appreciate your testimony, and congratulations on your graduation. Any other public comment at this point, none in chambers, gonna look to the Zoom one more time, we do still have a hand up from somebody named Mike. Uh, there's no last name attached, but we're gonna check one more time, Mike, are you there? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and lower that hand, uh, thank you all for this testimony, uh, obviously, baseball is a passion of mine, it's something that I did all the way through college, it molded me into the person I am, along with several of the s- people who spoke today, who I played against, played for, and played with. Um, I know that we've been advocating for this as something out of our Health Department, and we know that right now there's no state guidance on it, and so we'll continue to push at that level to make sure that we get some guidance that can be evenly applied throughout the state, uh, and hopefully we can have a fruitful conversation here about recommendations we can make up to make that happen soon, I lo- I have a lot of you, in, in my contacts, so I'll reach out soon to try to set something up, so thank you so much for coming in to testify today. With that, we're gonna close public comment, bring it back for our ten-thirty scheduled matters, which will be, begin with a briefing, an update on COVID nineteen, including the impacts and action proposals and plans to address, pr- and Mr. Chulos will be, uh, in making the introductions.
Thank you, uh, thank you Chair Lopez and Board members, we have two items we'd like to cover this morning. The first is the monitoring metrics, um, situation in terms of COVID, uh, positive, uh, cases, and the interaction that the county has had with the California Department of Public Health, and what might be some potential impacts there. And Dr. Moreno, Elsa, and Elsa Jimenez and Kristi Michie will cover that. The second item would be an update on testing in general by Elsa Jimenez, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, good morning Board members, uh, Chair, um, Dr. Moreno, Monterey County Health Officer, Director of Public Health. Yeah, I'm happy to share with you, or provide you an update, uh, and provide the public an update where Monterey County Health, uh, Department is, in terms of monitoring, uh, indicators for, uh, pandemic, uh, COVID nineteen. So I'm, uh, before I, uh, share the, my document with you, I'm gonna just give you some background and some context, so, uh, Monterey County, um, uh, chose to, uh, submit an attestation to the state a while back ago, stating that we wanted to be, included as a variance county for the purposes of moving through stages two, three, two and three, and four of, uh, the Governor's, uh, Resiliency Roadmap, uh, plan to move, uh, through, uh, COVID nineteen. And, uh, as part of that attestation, we submitted, we created, uh, identifying, created, uh, indicators, um, that we, uh, told the state that we would follow, uh, to monitor, uh, the, the spread of, uh, the virus and progression of, of the, pandemic here in Monterey County. So we've been monitoring those, uh, indicators over time, and, and from time to time, I've been providing updates, uh, to you, to the public, and to, uh, the media as well. We also have these, these, uh, this information posted on the Health Department website. So, um, in addition to that, uh, so we did get the approval for a variance, and we have progressed by reopening businesses, with modifications as stipulated by the, uh, California Department of Public Health, um, Industry Sector Guidance Documents. Um, and, um, in, alongside our indicators, the state has been, has created their own indicators. Uh, the state recognizes that each county has created its own set of indicators, so there's differences between and among counties. Uh, so the state has its own set of indicators to, um, create some uniformity, uh, for monitoring across, uh, the state, um, uh, between counties. Uh, one of those, uh, indicators, uh, is similar, very similar to ours, it's, and I'll show the document now. All right, is that up on your screen Supervisors?
Yes.
Thank you, all right, so, this document is, uh, again, it's on our website, we updated every, uh, every day. This document is updated as of June twenty-ninth, um, and the first group of indicators are intended to, help us monitor our local ability to test, to conduct contact tracing, uh, to isolate people who are infectious, so that they, uh, don't spread the, uh, the disease further. And anyone who's in isolation or quarantine, uh, is to be, uh, supported while they're in isolation or quarantine. Um, so, uh, the first, uh, metrics here is the fourteen-day cumulative incidence per one-hundred-thousand population. With that, uh, is a measure of is, um, the over fourteen days, looking at how many cases we have from day to day over that time period, and then converting that into a rate, with, by dividing it by a hundred thousand, which is, um, what the state is doing for all counties, uh, so that you could, they, they can make comparisons, across the counties. Um, we can compare rates, but we can't compare numbers, so that's why we use rates. The, um, current, uh, threshold that we set for ourselves Supervisors, uh, was, uh, uh, thirty-two per hundred thousand, and we, as you can see, we're at a hundred and forty-two, um, so we did set a, uh, relatively low threshold for ourselves, and we, we have exceeded, um, that now for, uh, at least a couple of weeks. Um, and, uh, that is an indication, uh, in, in my opinion, uh, that, that the, uh, that we do have increased, uh, uh, transmission of COVID nineteen in Monterey County. It's, um, it's due to a variety of factors, uh, many factors, it's, uh, due to the fact that we're reopening, um, businesses, and people, now have additional reasons to leave their homes, and when they leave their homes to seek services, they are coming in, into, uh, they're mixing with, um, people from other households. And that's how, one way that of, um, spread, we call that, um, community transmission, if, uh, if you leave your home and you're near other house, people from other households, and people are breath- breathing, sneezing, coughing, and the virus comes out and you breathe it in, you've been exposed, that's one, one method, so, um, I recognize that the businesses are, are, most of them are doing their best to, um, uh, implement measures to, um, make the work site, and the, uh, experience of people going to seek services as safe as possible, but there is, uh, as long as we continue to have, um, businesses remain open, uh, there still is an in- increase of, uh, risk of, uh, community spread, but, uh, again, the benefits of having, uh, But, uh, again, the benefits of having, uh, businesses open, uh, the economic benefits, uh, at this time, uh, have been fairly balanced with, uh, a, a slow rate of increase of COVID nineteen. But getting back to the, the threshold, we have exceeded the threshold. The state has said, has the same indicator, but they had a higher threshold and that is a hundred, one hundred per hundred thousand population. And you can see a hundred and forty-two also exceeds the state's, uh, threshold. So, the state has, uh, established, um, a, a plan on, uh, how to respond to, um, counties that, uh, are exceeding state thresholds, including this fourteen-day incidence rate. So, what's happened so far, uh, supervisors, is that the, um, the state has identified, uh, several counties who have exceeded that indicator or other indicators that the state is following, uh, for at least fourteen days. And those counties that have exceeded the threshold for fourteen days, uh, have been required to, uh, take action. And the action across those counties is, uh, uniform. It's the closure of bars. Uh, closure of bars, um, uh, was chosen by, uh, the state health officer because there is a, uh, uh, the, the activity is, is primarily a, a social activity. Uh, the activity, um, uh, in and of itself is basically people come from different households, uh, congregating in one place, uh, indoors and, um, for the purposes of meeting, for, uh, for talking, for, uh, socializing. And, um, in the, in those situations, the, um, there is a risk of, of transmission of, uh, uh, of COVID nineteen. And, uh, so that is, uh, the primary, uh, reason and, uh, the, the full explanation uh, for that direction is on the state's website. People are welcome to go to the website to read, uh, in more detail, uh, the state's rationale. Uh, and that's, so that is what the state has, actions they, say has taken. Uh, Monterey County has not ex- uh, according to the state, Monterey County has not exceeded, um, their threshold for, um, for fourteen days, but we were notified this past weekend that we did exceed their threshold for three days, which means that now that we are being, uh, monitored, uh, as well. Um, at some point, I, uh, I believe that the state will notify Monterey County and possibly some other counties that we are officially being monitored. So, it's unofficial right now, but they, I suspect they're gonna make it official by making some, uh, either posting it or making an announcement as they did, uh, last week with the other counties. Uh, when that happens, I suspect what will happen, supervisors, is that the, um, the count- the, uh, state will make a recommendation that Monterey County close bars, um, but not require it. So, at that point, um, we can choose to, uh, monitor it because we're still less than fourteen days according to the state. Uh, and, uh, it's, um, to see if perhaps, uh, we drop low threshold or get closer to the, to the threshold, uh, not as high as a hundred and forty-two, but perhaps it might dip and drop. And we'll have, we'll continue to have conversations with the state, um, team. Uh, that team is the, uh, uh, COVID, C D, California Department of Public Health, COVID nineteen data monitoring project. We will speak, continue to communicate with project, uh, team members uh, in terms of, uh, what the trend, uh, is here in Monterey County, um, as well. Um, should we, um, stay on their, exceed the state threshold for fourteen days? Um, this, and if the state remains consistent in their plan, uh, we can anticipate that the state will, uh, require that Monterey County, uh, close bars in an, in an attempt to, um, reduce, uh, the, um, uh, risk of exposure, um, here in Monterey County, uh, which, uh, uh, should, uh, may have an impact on, uh, this indicator and other indicators of, of, uh, COVID nineteen. So, um, with that, Nick, I'll, I'll stop and answer questions or, or proceed as you, as you wish.
I'm gonna go ahead and open up the board member for questions at this point. I'm gonna turn and I've got Supervisor Phillips with his hand up. Supervisor Phillips.
Just, Dr. Moreno, have we confirmed, uh, cases of emanated out of our bars, uh, in Monterey County? Is anything specific that we've found, uh, so far, or, uh, is this anecdotal or, or just generally they're looking at bars?
Uh, thank you Supervisor. So, um, in speaking with our epidemiologists, uh, there are, we haven't identified any, um, large outbreaks associated with bars, um, but we'd have a, we do, uh, recognize that approximately half of the, confirmed cases in Monterey County are not linked to a known case, um, which means that they acquired the infection somewhere outside of their home, most likely, either in a workplace or visiting a work site to receive services. Um, so, um, I believe that, uh, again, I would suggest that, uh, folks, uh, visit the, uh, state of California website to read the full explanation, but in general, uh, bars are, uh, as I mentioned, a, a, indoor location where there's extended, uh, mixing of households, um, create a, um, an opportunity for, uh, community exposures.
All right, thank you, Doc.
Any other questions from board members at this point? All right, seeing none, let's continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We do, would just like to have Elsa Jimenez comment briefly on testing, uh, status of testing and, uh, future efforts. Thank you.
Hi, good morning, uh, Chair Lopez, members of the board, members of the public. Elsa Jimenez, Director of Health Services for Monterey County. I'll just give you a brief update in terms of testing. Um, I wanna remind us that we've been at, uh, this effort since earlier this calendar year. And initially, because of, uh, uh, low supply of many of the materials needed for testing, it was initially only available for those individuals who were symptomatic in the hospital. And the number of community providers providing the services was very limited. You know, fast forward now to where we are. Uh, we have tested, uh, over twenty-five thousand, a hundred and fifty individuals in our county. Um, as of yesterday, uh, sixteen hundred of those, one thousand six hundred and forty-two, to be exact, have been positive. And our positivity rate, uh, was at about two-point-three percent back in, on, in, uh, late May when we submitted our attestation to the state and has been fluctuating over the last, uh, few weeks as, uh, has been noted, uh, with the data, uh, showing an increase in, um, availability of testing, increase of positives, uh, particularly as we've reopened additional sectors to where our positivity rate now is about six-point, uh, five-three percent. You know, initially, only the hospitals were providing this, uh, test, um, and some, uh, primary care providers in our community as well. That's now been expanded to where we do have two community test sites, uh, funded by the state and operated by Optum Serve and Greenfield and Salinas. Uh, in the last few weeks, we also have a new partnership between Plant Parenthood, Marmonti and MPC where they also offer a community test site. And more recently, over the last two weeks, uh, Natividad, uh, has been providing, uh, pop-up test sites, um, and have, uh, completed three to date and as Chair Lopez indicated earlier, uh, there will be a, a one coming up in, uh, the community of Tular. Over the last two weeks as well, uh, Clinica de Salud del Valle de Salinas, as well as our own Monterey County Health Department clinics, have also started to make this, uh, service available, uh, for their patients, uh, members of those, uh, family members of those patients and, um, and I think Clinica de Salud is, uh, is opening it up with the priority for really providing this service for, uh, farm workers in our, uh, community. We are currently also exploring, uh, increasing the number of, uh, of test sites available in our community and really using the data to help guide where those, uh, test sites should go up. Uh, these will be a series of, of pop-up tests that we hope to be able to launch, uh, mid-July and will pilot for about eight weeks. Uh, we are in discussions with a local provider and our area hospitals in terms of how we could make this service available in our, uh, communities of, with, uh, greatest need, meaning they don't have immediate access to testing right now. And really it being a very neighborhood-based, uh, approach where, uh, we will focus, uh, that service for residents in, in the surrounding area. I hope to be able to have more to report, um, at our next board meeting with respect to, uh, this new strategy where we are going to be taking testing into the community to make sure that all of our residents in Monterey County have an equitable opportunity to be tested, uh, should they, uh, wish to be tested. And so, uh, with that, I'll take any questions from the board or the public.
Thank you, Director Jimenez. I'm gonna look to the board, see if there's any questions. Okay, seen no hands going up. I believe that was it for the presentation, so at this point, I'll open it up to the public for comments on this presentation. Mr. Light, come forward.
Yeah, thank you, Bill Light, resident in Monterey County. Just wanna say the men's room was out of hand sanitizer, so I don't know who changes that, but it needs to be filled. And it's happening a lot of places, the hand sanitizer's running out. Um, I appreciate being pointed to the state website to talk about their thesis on why bars are an issue, but I don't have to go out and read it. It's laughable on its face. We could be catching it right here. I could've caught it in the bathroom, no hand sanitizer. Um, catch it in the store, you can catch it on a bus or a train. Um, uh, you know, I think this is virtue, virtue signaling at its worst. You know, there are a lot of young people think they're impervious. Guess what? That's not new. Uh, they're going out, they're drinking, they're socializing, they're having fun in their minds. Um, and of course, the state needs to rise up and say, no, you can't do that. Um, I wholly endorse, you know, people expressing themselves. We had a lot of protests a couple of weeks ago. Very likely led to a lot of community spreading, whether they were wearing masks or not. So, no one was saying no then, and I think that to single out one, a bar, or bars in general, is just, uh, is kinda silly. And I appreciate Dr. Moreno. I know he's been a, been put in a pretty difficult situation. Um, really, I think you, the supervisors, really needed to be leading on this and, and helping make the decisions. You're the ones that are elected. You're the ones that are ultimately accountable. And I think, uh, putting Dr. Moreno in a position where, as a pediatric doctor, he has to be evaluating what businesses are essential and which ones are not, I think is unfair. And maybe that's part of the process, mayb- maybe the process is unfair, but you as supervisors, in my opinion, really needed to step up and take leadership of this issue. We're, we're rural county, we're different. And just for the, you know, just so you know, LA County sheriffs have said they are not going to enforce the beach closers, uh, beach closers, fleet- beach closures in LA County. Um, they're going against their board of supervisors. They just say it's not appropriate. So, I would hope that when this decision gets made, you don't single out a certain industry or certain merchant class that's been obviously badly damaged along with everybody else. Let's, let's just let people make their, their own decisions and, and get out of the way, if you will. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anybody else? Nobody in chambers gonna turn to the Zoom, see if we have any comments? See no hands going up, so I'll bring it back to the board for any final thoughts. All right, we'll deem that presentation complete. Thank you. And we will head on to our next item, which is making an appointment to the GSA eligible, the other GSA eligible entity and environment primary, environmental primary and alternate director positions for the Board of Directors of the Salinas Valley Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency from Mr. Gerard.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair, members of the board. Um, I trust my, uh, board report was, um, clear and laid the background for the two actions you're being asked to take today. Uh, this, uh, board makes certain appointments to the GSA Board of Directors and a couple of those, uh, appointments need to be made today. This has two parts and I'd like to separate them because, uh, one is relatively straightforward. That's the environmental or environment director. Uh, that is nominated by a caucus of environment groups, uh, throughout Monterey County and they have nominated Janet Brennan as the primary director. She is actually the current primary director. And Ms. Robin Lee as the alternate director and, uh, I made an error in my board report. Ms. Lee is the current, um, alternate director as well. So, I'd ask the board to, uh, make that appointment to those seats and we can take up the other GSA eligible entity after.
Any board questions before we go to public comment? All right, see no board questions. We'll open it up for public comment. Any public comment on this appointment? Okay, bring it back to the board.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chair. Um, I just wanted to say Ms. Brennan has, uh, served, um, um, effectively on that board. She's been, attended and participated and asked all the right questions, so I think her voice, uh, um, is an important one to remain on the GSA.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, the second. Public comment? All right, roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Parker? Supervisor Parker?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Lopez?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Members of the board, uh, the next seat for appointment consideration is the other GSA eligible entity, a director seat. Um, that is, uh, nominees or interested parties from three entities are, um, qualified for that seat. Those three entities are the Board of Supervisors of Monterey County, uh, the Water Resources Agency and M-one W or Monterey One Water. The current primary director is Supervisor Alejo. He has indicated his interest in keeping that role. The current alternate is Paul Shudo, General Manager of M-one W. He has also indicated an interest in continuing in that role. And the Water Resources Agency Board of Directors has nominated John Bailey, uh, who is currently the Chair of the Board of Directors of the Water Resources Agency. Um, I would ask that each of the candidates speak to their, uh, nomination. Supervisor Alejo is, uh, on Zoom and I believe Mr. Shudo may be on Zoom as well, uh, in the audience and Mr. Bailey is in the audience personally.
I'll take him out alphabetically by last name, so Supervisor Alejo.
Thank you, um, Mr. Chair. Certainly, um, uh, being the board representative since inception, I wanna continue to serve. There's still a lot of work to do. In fact, probably some of the hardest work still ahead, but I think, um, I think we, we've been, uh, an effective voice, uh, on the Board of Supervisors, but I think there's some important work for, for all the, the Salinas Valley Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency to do. Um, it's probably one of the most important pieces of legislation, um, in terms of requiring for the first time ever in California history, a sustainability plan. And the enforcement is, is still ahead and there's still a lot of pieces that we're gonna continue to work on, so I'd be, uh, proud to continue serving on this and, and being this board's voice on there and making sure that, um, um, we're addressing key issues, um, in the years ahead. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Alejo. Uh, Director Bailey?
Good morning, Chairman and Supervisors. Um, I was asked, I guess, in a vote at the last Water Resource Agency meeting, if I would volunteer my time for this committee. Uh, I said, I accepted the nomination. Water is a livelihood of this valley, not only for the population, but also for agriculture and it's for our future and it's a key part of my life right now and, uh, um, whatever I can do, I'll do. And, uh, uh, like I said, it's an important cog in the whole big picture of Monterey County, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. We're gonna go to, uh, Mr. Shudo next. I don't see him in the panelists or attendees. If you're one of the phones, Mr. Shudo, can you raise your hand for us? I believe that's star six? Or star nine, I apologize. Star nine will raise your hand. Okay. Perhaps he's not with us. So, with that, I'll bring it back to this board.
Mr. Shudo did have an urgent matter come up this morning, so, um, he might not be available.
So, we'll go to public comment on this appointment next. Mr. Light?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'm Bill Light, speaking as a resident of Monterey County. Um, you know, as a, as a, a member, as a resident of the county, I would hope that our supervisors are fully focused on your budget, on your various responsibilities that you already have. This is an agency that doesn't necessarily require a supervisor to be on it. There's a number of stakeholders that are already on it. And, um, and we have three candidates for this seat. Now, myself and, and, and maybe other people, I know at least a few other people, may disagree with Director Bailey on a lot of issues. There's no, there's no, uh, there's no doubt he has a lot of experience. He's worked at the, served, uh, on the Water Resources Agency for a very long time and he is very knowledgeable. Um, just not all of his opinions are agreeable with some folks. I think Mr. Shuto is also a man of high integrity, has been managing, um, you know, complex water, water system over, over on the coast that, uh, that serves our neighbors in, in- water system over, over on the coast, that, that serves our neighbors in, in Monterey and Seaside, and some other places. I think, you've got three candidates here. I think if you're gonna put Supervisor Alejo and Director Bailey on there, that's not really, in my, in my estimation, or my perspective, a very balanced way to do this. I think Mr. Shuto needs to fill one of these seats. He's, again, I think, has a lot of integrity, he's dealing with some tough situations, he's dealing with a lot of politics, which this issue is not supposed to be about, it's supposed to be about science, it's supposed to be about reality, not a bunch of political games that sometimes seem to be played. So, I, I would, I would recommend, really, you know, Mr. Shuto's the primary and Director Bailey is the second, of course, it's your decision, but I think those would be two people that have a lot of experience in this valley with this basin. Supervisor Alejo can focus on the more pressing issues of the county as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lipe. Any other public comments on this? Seeing nobody in chambers, I'll turn to the Zoom. Seeing no hands going up, I'll bring it back to this board for consideration.
So what, what's a decision we have to make between the three?
So we're appointing a primary and an alternate out of the three choices. So I, I would, go ahead, Supervisor.
Well, I, I disagree with the, the comments that were made. I, I think it's Supervisor Alejo's done a commendable job. And I, so I, I, I would move him being the primary, and, and I guess, out of respect for the Water Resource Agency and coming in, I think Mr. Bailey for the alternate position would be my motion.
I'll second that. So we have a motion and a second. Any additional board conversation? Okay, let's go ahead and take a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Parker? And Chair Supervisor Lopez?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you very much. At this point, we're gonna adjourn in memory of Salinas Mayor Joe Gunter, and for that, I wanna turn to Supervisor Alejo first. I'm sorry, Supervisor Alejo, you're muted.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, sorry, start over. Thank you for allowing this adjourn in memory today. It is with the heavy heart and great sadness that we adjourn our Board of Supervisors meeting in memory of our friend, a dedicated public servant and Salinas Mayor, Joe Gunter. We're also flying our county flags at half-staff in honor of him. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for that. And Salinas has, had no greater champion than Mayor Gunter, and today we express our deepest condolences to his wife, Lisa Isman, his children, his family, and many friends. And we were all devastated, we were all devastated to getting the news late yesterday about his passing. My grandmother used to tell us, don't bring me flowers when I'm no longer here. So, this board of supervisors did recognize Mayor Gunter last January, when he was here with us during our meeting, to recognize and thank Mayor Gunter to celebrate his fifty years of exemplary public service. And I just wanna read a portion of that resolution that read, "Joe Gunter was born and raised in Baltimore, Maryland, residing there until nineteen fifty-nine, when he and his family relocated to the city of Marina where he attended school. He followed his father's footsteps, joined the military, and served the United States Marine Corps, where he received the rank of sergeant and fought in the Vietnam War. After successfully serving in the military, Mayor Gunter returned to Monterey County, where he sought a career in law enforcement. On December tenth, nineteen sixty-nine, at the age of twenty-two, Mr. Gunter was hired by the Salinas Police Department, where he obtained immediate advice by his chief to stay engaged and learn from the community in order to understand its needs. Mr. Gunter not only served the community, he became a resident of the community, and over the span of thirty-two years, Mr. Gunter thrived and quickly made detective investigating an estimated three hundred and forty homicides within the city of Salinas and Monterey County, receiving the nineteen eighty-six Officer of the Year Award. In two thousand and two, Mayor Gunter, an achieved community servant, retired from the Salinas Police Department with high praise and vision for the future of the city of Salinas. Joe Gunter and his wife, Lisa Isman, opened the Salinas School of Dance and operated a private investigation firm for civil cases. On November twenty-twelve, Mr. Gunter and his long affinity for community engagement, bestowed upon him through his mother's passion for community involvement, embarked on history when he was the first former police officer to be elected mayor of the city of Salinas. Joe Gunter's commitment and dedication to community and service championed great efforts to move Salinas forward by strengthening city infrastructure, improving public safety resources, parks and open spaces, establishing a partnership between the city and county to battle homelessness, while developing economic efforts and job growth opportunities. Joe Gunter was honorable, has honorably served the community by way of volunteerism, worked for the Salinas Police Department, California International Airshow Association, California Rodeo Salinas, the Women's Crisis Center for Monterey County, Central Coast Federal Credit Union, Alsal Youth Sports, and as a founding member of Tap-in Dads. Joe Gunter has contributed over fifty years of service to the city of Salinas as a military veteran, police officer, detective, coach, parent, mentor, and trusted elected official." So, we, we read the last paragraph, "Therefore be resolved that the Monterey County Board of Supervisors, on behalf of the county and all residents thereof, honors Salinas Mayor Joe Gunter and commends him for fifty years of dedicated, unselfish, hard work, and his exemplary service to the city of Salinas and the people of Monterey County." Personally, I just wanted to lastly add that I just want to let everyone know how much I respected and appreciated the hard, working relationship and friendship with Mayor Gunter. I have now been in elected office for twelve years, and many years before that as a community organizer, but I put Joe among the very top of the most hard-working and dedicated public officials that I have ever met. He was straightforward, he was genuine, and he really cared about everyone in Salinas. He, he very intentionally made a point, going to all corners of the city, including the east side, including, including its festivals like the Sixteenth of September. And he also cared about our poorest and most vulnerable residents, whether it was at the Chinatown block party, or serving food for homeless residents with me at the Methodist Church on Thanksgiving. He was a Marine Corps veteran, and was always there supporting our vets, and the events that honored them, like the big Salinas Veterans Day Parade. He also cared about improving public safety and making our neighborhoods safer for our youth and our families, and I was honored for the last four years to serve as his co-chair of CAS, which is the Community Alliance for Safety and Peace. He was its true leader, and with dozens of local churches, nonprofits, schools, city, county, and law enforcement leaders coming together once every two weeks at seven o'clock in the morning, and he always led those meetings, because I'm not the best at, that early in the morning. But over the last four years, we have seen crime significantly be reduced here in Salinas, and Joe was a key part of that progress. Big projects would not have been possible without Joe, including our county and city homeless shelter, our new permanent homeless shelter that's under construction, our soon-to-be expanded soccer complex, the new Gablin Library, with a new police station. And I hope that the city leaders will consider naming the new police station after Joe in his honor. Today Monterey County mourns at losing one of Salinas' greatest champions, one of our best public servants, and he gave it all for this amazing city, and he will be greatly missed by everyone here in Salinas. And I commit to keeping Joe's memory alive by working very hard, just as he did every day for Salinas. And today, we adjourn our Board of Supervisors meeting in his memory. We will miss you, Mayor Joe. Salute you, your lifetime of service, and we'll take it from here, my friend. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yeah, thank you Supervisor Alejo for bringing this matter to our forefront. The city of Salinas and Monterey County lost a, a really good man yesterday, and Joe Gunter was a great cop, a great mayor, and he was truly devoted to the city of Salinas. You know, probably I'd have a different perspective than most, since Joe and I were friends for fifty years, since the time that he was a young street cop and I was a new deputy district attorney. He truly, and I guess I'll focus on his accomplishments as a detective and a cop, 'cause he was truly one of the finest and fairest cops this county has ever seen. And he was kind of like the cop that you see on TV. He was the primo cop, and he was a homicide detective, major crime, whether he was working with Andy Yanni or Gary Edwards, they were always the, the primo team that got the big cases, that got the big cases resolved, and all did it with style and, and, and class. He always was fair with everybody, gave, gave people a break when they deserved it, consequently, he had the best information system. He could, he, he could get information out of the community because they trusted him when other, other people couldn't. So it was, it was nice after the passage of a number of years, it was nice to now be able to work with him as an elected official from the county and the city standpoint. We, as mentioned by Supervisor Alejo, he was instrumental in getting some things done. I remember when we were having trouble where we, where we were gonna put a temporary homeless shelter, and we were crosswise, and he called me up, he said, "Let's have coffee on a Saturday morning." We went, we walked down to the old public defender where the homeless shelter is now. We kind of got some agreement to that, and the next thing was done, he made it happen. He also worked with us on the animal shelter, the permanent homeless shelter. So, I last spoke to Joe last Friday, he was, said he was in the hospital, and I called him to see if he was coming to the forum meeting. He said he was gonna have to miss the last forum meeting, but he'd be out of, out of the hospital on Saturday and see me later. No one was more committed to the city of Salinas than Joe Gunter. May he rest in peace. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Supervisor, I'm gonna see if Supervisor Parker's rejoined us, I know she had some connectivity issues. I don't see her number. So at this point, I just, I wanna use this opportunity to thank Joe's family for the time that they gave us. Fifty years is a long time to be in public service to any community, but to have all that time spent in the service of one community, the city of Salinas, is so rare and often unheard of, and Joe did it at so many different levels. You know, Joe and I spent a lot of time across the table from each other in different negotiations, and we would rib each other and push each other and argue and disagree, but every time on the way out the door, he'd pull me aside and ask about the family, ask about the baby. And he didn't just ask, he truly listened to my response, and that meant a lot to me. Joe was an awesome guy who, at the end, understood that his job was to fight for the city and the residents of Salinas, and a lot of people didn't always agree with the positions he took, but he did it in a way where he was upfront and honest about what he was doing and why, and that is the best we can ask of public servants. Joe fought hard for us, for the people of, of Salinas and the people of Monterey County, bringing projects to this region that don't just impact the city of Salinas, but all of Monterey County. When I think of the vision that he supported at the sports complex, the things that he got behind and put his shoulder into to help make happen, those are things that for decades, families here in Salinas are gonna bear, you know, be able to enjoy the fruit of, and throughout Monterey County, people are gonna continue to remember him for all these contributions he's made to us. I think it's appropriate that we adjourn this mem, this meeting in his memory, and the flags throughout Monterey County on our public facilities are flying at half-mast in honor of Mayor Joe Gunter, who, you know, I, it's hard to, to share these words from this dais, 'cause down at that far end is where Joe and I would sit side by side on LaFco, and we would always have too much fun laughing down there, we'd sometimes miss it when they were calling us for votes. But you know, Joe could say a million things with a look, and it was usually that eye roll and the tip of his head up, and you just knew what Joe was thinking. And we had so much fun up here on this dais, so it makes it really hard, and I'm, I'm thankful that, you know, that, that we had the time to spend with Joe and, and to continue to celebrate him and the fruits of his, of, of his work here in the city of Salinas is something that I'm thankful for. But Joe will be greatly, greatly missed, so Mayor Gunter, we, we, we know your, we know you, your contributions to this community are great, and we wish your family the best. It's very bitter, bittersweet. So thank you, everybody, with that, we're adjourned.